I'll go ahead and call me in order.
I'll go ahead and call me in order.
I plan to be tested for you with a lot of them.
Okay, nice to meet you.
And to the Republic, our wishes, thanks. One nation, of the ground. In this, we will be ready and to us, your own.
All right, Nancy and Jim.
Morning, morning.
Awesome. None of it is from mom.
Give us the vertical in.
Okay, my bad.
I hope they unmute button. Thank you.
This was funny. Um, this is what we found up from last month. So we're getting a little better.
Mm hmm.
New things.
What happens when you step on the building people?
Well, I see.
And this is what we got from our collection agency.
Oh, Hera for the amount of two thousand seventy four dollars and twenty five cents. Thanks, man. That Jonathan will hear.
Pretty cut and dry design operations. We're operating our normal four out of six ambulance to two or reserves intervals of certain intervals. Uh, three plus one transfer truck at all over ALS level. Uh, when snapping permits, minimum of one ALS staff member at all times scheduled medic three. Knox base sixty nine percent of June staffing, minimum of two ALS staff ambulances. Uh, it was decreased from last month at one percent. ALS ambulances hundred percent minimum staffing of one paramedic at Knox base. Uh, continuing to operate day less non-transport vehicle twenty four hours a day. Transfers, I'm proud of this one ninety two transfers, that's forty more than we've had.
Yeah.
At the top.
Nice.
Uh. And they also ran twenty seven percent of our calls. So on top of doing the transfers, they were running emergency calls and we had a very physical one. Three hundred forty seven calls total. Uh, right now we have no full time openings for anybody. Uh, just hire two new part time employees, E and Ts. As I get a stack of applications that come through my email, uh, everybody wants full time. I don't know what's going on there, but.
Okay.
Uh. Uh, I do have one new applicant for a part time paramedic who's actually in the works upstairs. Training, training has now been reworked into a weekly schedule with the field training officer. And a couple additions as assistants to him. So every day pretty much their training and cleaning, which is a good thing.
Mm hmm.
Last incident was seven twenty three twenty five, that was a. Uh, patient that. The person picked up and there were no injuries, he just felt like he strained something in his shoulder, he never went to the doctor, he didn't go. Seen, he was fine the next day. Ambulance maintenance. Uh, thirty three oh eight, it went out for repairs for the charging system, it it's back already. Uh, what is seven twenty five current? Uh, Knox base. A medic three forty nine twenty six is currently scheduled for P M tomorrow. By fourteen, which is a Grovetown base, it's in service and we're up and running, everything's perfect so far. Transfer truck growing miles, of course. It's in service, but it's scheduled for maintenance, I think it's Friday. Eighty four, uh, it blew the radiator apart and we don't know why. So they're gonna test it, but it's this Ford six O motor.
Hmm.
So. We don't know what's happening with that one as of yet, still has to be towed over to Deli.
I'm good. They're all gone.
Nope, nope.
That transfer truck, you told me, that's the little one.
That's, yeah, that's what we call Jeff. That's the small one, it actually works pretty good, except for, I mean. That where they place the thing, you you can't reach in and grab the door, well, I can't because I got short arms. But I can't reach in and grab the door handle on one side, so we have a little string.
Wow.
Open the side door. Uh. The chase car medic forty one, it's in service, everything's good with that one. My car is good and needs tires, but just waiting until winter time. Base maintenance, uh, Jason. Came in for a quote and ended up finding an issue and I had just had him fix it while it was there. Uh, because he called me and said, hey, look, you got a G F I that's running. In the bathroom, that runs the entire circuit all the way back out, so nobody even knew it was there. So that's a trip to all the breakers. Uh. He advised not to, or he recommended not to rewire the base because there's that whole wall is on. One circuit, but there's nothing that runs off that except for the computer and the baby box. So he said it's not worth the money because we don't have anything on there.
Right.
I'm like, I go with what Jason says. Medic one, uh, Jason went up there too to give a quote for the Ledge goal and he found a couple burnout ballasts up there. And a breaker that was going bad. And all the default outlet. He, uh, replaced those while he was there. River town, I'm still trying to find somebody to come out and do an evaluation.
Mm hmm.
FBI said they come out, Clary said they come out, but every time they do it, it's been a. A rainy season is what I was told and they're trying backlog.
Hmm.
So I could, hey, I'm open for suggestions on that.
So I'm calling it. Have you found any laying it there yet?
No, I'm waiting until October.
Hmm, I got a couple looking too.
I, the only thing I found was, uh. In the industrial apartment.
It's all the way inside the tracks too.
I did run across one yesterday when we were doing the parade down the Yellowstone Trail. But it has no number on it, it's right beside Goldos. Which is pretty much where perfect places where all the accidents happen at six hundred east.
Yeah.
And but it's it's right on the same side with the. What is that, the corn bin, the the big ogre?
Cool. Cool.
Cool, yeah. Draw a blank.
Yeah, it could be on the other side of the track.
It's on the other side of the tracks, it's probably about two acres. So I don't know, I'm gonna try to find out about that today. Uh, the bids were sent out, but we're holding off on the bids, I just left that on there so I could remember.
Why, why are you holding off? Because you need that done, right?
Yeah, Knox base, I gotta check on, see if I still have a new budget for that one, I know I don't have the maintenance budget. But I was just made aware today that we still had people coming out to see it since twenty twenty one. Which I didn't know we had anybody coming out to see it. But, uh, Doc Suzanne, they're supposed to be coming out of general account. Somehow they're coming out of one 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 two, which is seated account. So it was overdrawn by twenty seven thousand since twenty twenty one, well, not since.
Right. She said it was set up in twenty twenty one by Wendy, the previous payroll person.
So we don't know why, but also have a current employee that was thrown into it too.
Hmm.
But that was before Suzanne too.
I think on them doors, I mean, they need.
They need.
They need to. Today, then we should do help.
At least, Ro, Knox. Knox and North Judson, because we're not sure, I do with Grovetown, likes the one where I hold off on Grovetown, because if I spend ten grand in Grovetown. Who knows how much it would cost them, wouldn't build it.
Yeah.
Nothing's gonna happen, but I have the smallest ambulance down here other than Jeff right now, skinning your doors. Uh, the responses I did get were precision will not do commercial doors, Hoosier does not do work at Stark County. Express doors, of course, out of business, accurate door construction, the wheat field. Industrial during, they said they were coming on seven twenty four, they had no show, no call and denied every second point.
So my space is the one that the latest one, right?
Yeah, that knocks space for fourteen five, fourteen thousand five hundred eighteen dollars, twelve cents. That's the one that actually does have to be replaced because you can see into the building.
Well, I think I'm forward with that, if you don't have it, then you don't need to measure it.
Yeah.
Thank the commissioners helping.
Yeah, I'll let them know that they can go ahead and do it.
Yeah, at least have one for now.
Yeah.
Like, don't you need to make a motion for that?
I made a motion.
They had a motion, a second, follows in favor, hi.
Hi.
And that was the Knox base?
Yeah, fourteen thousand five hundred and eighteen dollars and twelve cents. Uh, grants, the Nitsco grant I applied for got denied because seven fire houses here. Applied for it, EMS applied for it, and I think E M A applied for it, so they just, it's like the third year. Third time I've applied for it, got turned out.
Hmm.
The S I A grant, which is a Subaru. They, we applied for fifteen thousand dollars for it, but. You don't have, there's more more grants coming, uh, I'm waiting for the M Y H grant now. Hopefully that'll be done, uh, which didn't go on here, the M Y H issue. I'm waiting on the protocols to be written and put that into full force. And that'll cut down on a lot of the reentries into the hospitals, the education for. O B, diabetes, narcotics, alcohol abuse, we have listed the entire gambit. For what we're allowed to do. So that's, that'll bring in a little bit more revenue too. And Frank has already got much of the, uh, money for payroll, pay them. Paramedic that has to do it. Which I'm happy.
Right.
If we can get the two hundred fifty thousand dollar study grant, it would be better. That's all I have, guys, you have any questions?
No, don't on this, but while you're up here, what's the status on the sirens badly?
It is supposed to be, the new ones in and they were supposed to be in last week. Go install it, but it was raining when they were coming to install it, like Bruce said, okay?
They're supposed to come when?
They were supposed to come last week, but they stopped it because of Bruce said it was raining, he didn't want to be up there raining.
Alright.
Problem we have with that is I have to be available. Not break the tower to put them up there.
Hmm.
So I told him, I said, we got to, I gotta work around. My meetings and everything else, I said, I can go in there and get you set up at seven o'clock in the morning. And show you how to run it, but you're gonna have to call me so I can get you back down.
Alright, oh, yeah.
Unless you wanna climb that hundred foot ladder, that's fine with me. Uh, but the old siren's already taken apart, it's just waiting on him.
Right.
But we've been waiting on him since, oh, what?
I'm gonna say it's been a while.
June, somewhere in that general, but.
Yeah.
Uh, we did tell North Bend Township that they need to figure out what they're gonna do. Because they need to pay for theirs to have them. With Ben's, I can provide, yeah, you know, and they said, well, we don't have money. Which.
If you'll keep me in touch on that, how that's rolling.
Sounds good to me.
Good. I don't have no question going with him.
I don't have anything. All right.
Thank you guys. Yeah, thanks a lot.
Uh, Sean and Chuck.
Morning, buddy.
Morning, morning. Morning, morning.
First and foremost, did you receive all the information I sent me email? Did you have an, okay, good, you had an opportunity to review that. Uh, pretrial services are mandated in the state of Indiana. The implementation of these services is guided by Indiana Criminal Rule twenty six. And the Indiana Pretrial Services Rules, both of which emphasize a risk based approach to pretrial release and supervision. Uh, now these rules encourage the use of risk assessments and evidence based practices to determine whether. An individual in Stark County should be released before trial and what conditions of release are appropriate. These items have fallen directly under the purview of, uh, Mr. Chuck Phillips here for the past nine years or ten?
No, it'll be ten.
Ten years coming up, who's directly responsible for pretrial services and supervision of Stark County. What we respectfully requesting is seventy thousand dollars to be paid out of the restricted opioid abatement funds. Which would primarily primarily cover personnel, the salary and additional training for Mr. Phillips. Now his benefits are paid separately from the Supreme Court grant. So it will not cover any benefits, salary, his personnel salary and training. We believe in the information that we sent for everybody to review and certainly ask questions if you if you have them, we would encourage that. But if you look at the, uh, the restricted uses out of the opioid abatement funds. Uh, the information talks primarily about addressing the needs of the criminal justice involved persons. Specifically pre arrest or pre arraignment diversion programs and deflection strategies. Supporting pretrial services that connect individuals with substance use disorders and treatment programs. And all these occurring again, pre arraignment before they even, uh, begin to get sentenced or go through the judicial process. And we feel it's in alignment with that, the request is. Um, and again, what we're asking for is to, uh, uh, request that money for twenty twenty six. Initially, and Mr. Phillips will correct me if I'm wrong, the state of Indiana paid for this. Uh, nine years ago was put into place, similar to our community corrections grant, it is a separate grant. But similar to that, where the state of Indiana would pay for this, and they did so. Uh, Chuck was even, uh, ahead of the curve, he got certification in pretrial services. And not every county in the state of Indiana has an official certification. I'm on a hazard to say unless Chuck tells me I'm wrong, but it's probably less than twenty five counties in the entire state of Indiana that perceive that. And part of that was to comply with the D O C's requirements for funding. But, um, about four or five months ago, they sent a memo out saying they're no longer gonna support pretrial funding. That is a county based issue and not a state based issue. So with that being said, it does boil down to whether or not how we spend those monies. Uh, I think Judge Hall was kind enough to submit a memo for your review as well too. The, uh, the progress has been made with pretrial services to assist the courts, the prosecutor. And to make sure that we keep the right people incarcerated in Stark County versus the folks that just can't afford a a small monetary bail. That's part of the reason we're requesting this today, so.
Have you talked to your board about it, Sean?
No, we have not, I haven't specifically because, uh, it it's one of those things that doesn't require advisory board approval.
Okay.
You know, it doesn't, because it it's kind of, it's an odd relationship sometimes.
Okay.
I think just if I may, people view court services as being under the the same umbrella of funding. We're under the same umbrella in terms of programs and services and accountability and policies. But our advisory board for community corrections is solely for our community corrections program.
Okay.
Pretrial is its own entity that falls under the umbrella. Pre-trial is its own entity that falls under the umbrella of court services, I would liken it to a special report. Quite frankly, with the certification process. And it has its own set of policies and procedures that were mandated by the state that Chuck has, uh, complied with and, and got the certification process over.
I think it's a good program, I think it's something we need to keep going.
Thank you.
Oh, go ahead.
I'd like to make that motion and we'll go forward with what was the amount.
Seventy.
Seventy thousand dollars for calendar year twenty twenty-six, Commissioner Bacon.
So made that motion, I'll second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You don't need to go to the first council too.
When do we do that? It's, I, I, that educate me on it, because I don't think.
Well, you have to get their approval before they'll advertise it, so you, if you can come tonight, there are meetings at six o'clock, but it would be under other business.
Okay.
So you wouldn't have a set time.
Alright, so although it's been approved by the commissioners, it still needs the council's approval as well too?
Yeah, anytime money is spent.
Okay, alright.
Yeah, um, their meeting's at six o'clock, but, and there's not much on their agenda, but still, I am here.
And it's okay to share with them that it's been approved. Okay, well, thank you for that, appreciate that. Anything else?
Thanks for your time.
Thank you all, we have nice.
Uh, then we have Kelly up.
Thanks for your time, gentlemen. This gives you a little information, what I'm here to talk about is, oh yes, I do actually have. Well, yeah. Um, now, the, there's some names on here, because this came from the, uh. The group that has connected me with the masonry program. So some of the, uh, titles on there are from actually Cascade High School down around Indy. The masonry program is in about forty to fifty schools now in Indiana, and we're now one of them at North Johnson Sand Pier. Um, so we got it started, I previously talked to you about the shared mission of K twelve in the county along with skill. Uh, both trying to get improved pathways and offerings in the vocational setting for K twelve. But also adult education. Um, so what I'm here asking for today is, uh, financial assistance as we are starting this program up. We've, uh, we're about ten days in now at North Johnson Sand Pier, happy to report we've got. Ten kids enrolled in the program, and that is, that doesn't sound like a lot, but with the short notice and scheduling, that's really good. Um, and that will only continue to increase.
And it's offered to the whole county.
It is, it's, it's open to the whole county and Culver. And, uh, next month I will present to the CTE Cooperative, and it'll actually be available to, uh, Marshall County Schools as well. Um, sometimes that distance doesn't net you a whole lot of enrollment. Um, but what we're looking for this year, it's K twelve only. But next year, we have a possibility of growing that into an adult ed evening offering as well. So you will see, uh, some part, some supply list, materials list. Um, things like the, the big expenses are an electric mixer, electric saw. For masonry and brick, and then a lot of hand tools and things. The grand total on that startup list is seventeen thousand. Um, we would be happy with anything that would help us take a bite out of that. Um, and again, with the hope being that that benefits our K twelve kids. As well as adult education as we continue growing those two things.
This is just a one-time thing, Kelly?
Yeah, this is, this is a one-time. Yeah, like I said, the two, the two big items on there you'll see is we, the electric mortar mixer and the masonry saw. Um, then you get into a lot of hand tool type things, uh, you know, but that stuff adds up quick and, uh. You know, so NJSP Schools has taken on the salary of this new program, new teacher. Uh, we've got somebody that comes to us with twenty-two years in the union trades as a mason bricklayer. Um, so we're real excited about where this can go for us. But yeah, these are all one-time, just getting us going type calls.
It's a roll, and it'll fund itself.
That's right, right. And as long as the other eight, nine superintendents are agreeable next month when I present, and they should be. Uh, we make that a CTE program, it will nest under another statewide pot of money called Perkins Money. Which is available to, to high school students, uh, so that'll be an additional health i- in, in funding as well. Um, but yeah, the, these are the kinds of things, when you get a new program like this started.
Right.
There isn't anything in there in the educational world to fund some of those startup costs.
And you, they, we get the building and everything else rolling, so I mean, she went through the news.
Yeah, we made a, a space inside, well, we kind of, I kind of kicked out my mason, my, uh, I'm sorry, my maintenance. Director took a space from him and we've made it work, so we're rolling with it now.
I'll, the council will go with this, Charlie, I'd like to make a motion to fund it all out of solar.
Yeah.
The whole amount of seventeen. And if for some reason they don't fund it out of solar, you'll have to come back and then we'll have to crane out another.
Gotcha.
Fantastic, should we do either that or Q and camp, Danny, or?
Oh, do if they won't fund it up, yeah. And then you won't have to come back, you get that, Mike Lee? How we do the motion?
Well, we have a motion, because they're, I'll second that, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Fantastic, great. Yeah.
Yeah, it's good for the whole county.
We, uh, there's a lot of people working real hard to increase employability. Whether a kid grads, graduates at eighteen, or they haven't quite figured it out yet. We are gonna keep increasing offerings to make Stark County residents employable. And, yeah, well, thank you very much.
The vendor claims, uh, the vendor claims on the amount of three hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars and ninety-five cents. Had a motion, I'll second, all those in favor, aye?
What about that other vendor claim, do you wanna do that at the same time? Add that?
Uh, well, yeah, we'll make it, do a separate thing. We got a vendor claim for Kingsman Concrete and the amount to two, uh, two thousand nine hundred sixty dollars. That was from Frank's budget, right?
Yeah, I don't remember which one, but it.
Yeah, he said it would be out of his budget.
Yeah. Their motion to approve that, motion, I'll make second, all those in favor, aye? What do we need to sign that, hopefully, right here?
On the back, I think it's on the back is where it shows for commissioners, dentures. Yeah.
Right here, I think, yeah.
Thank you.
Our motion approved the payroll claims in the amount of three hundred twenty-eight thousand, ninety-three dollars and thirty-six cents. Second, all those in favor, aye? Our motion approved the commissioner's meeting minutes from eight, four, twenty-five. Second. The Perry Yoder's request to purchase county property.
I sent this to you back in June.
Yeah.
And it's been on the agenda every meeting so far, so I don't know what you guys wanna do with this. You want me to contact her and tell her?
I would like to know what she'd want to build there.
Okay, so just tell her that you want more information.
Yeah, and I think the money needs to be different.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we need to build that industrial park up any, I wanna know what. Yeah, just ask if more information and. We'll check with the real estate, probably, I don't even know, price, land going to you.
Yeah, there's something there.
Septic out there, water out there.
Request for GIS access from CoreLogic.
I think I sent you the.
Yeah, yeah, I just didn't have it in front of me here.
No, you wanna look at it?
You've seen that now, hasn't it? That's normal, we.
I was gonna say we're normal.
They have to pay for it.
Yeah, two hundred fifty dollars. Their motion to approve that request, I'll second, all those in favor, aye? We gotta sign this anywhere, Mike, can we?
Hey, did you guys bring a copy of the new handbook with you?
No, I didn't.
Um, there's just two changes, I think they're both highlighted here, page one and, or. The first two pages, it's highlighted what the changes are.
And that was something that we had to do, right?
Yes, heard the new state laws.
And that's another approval for the, I mean, the whole handbook thing, except.
They're just, it's two parts, they're being added.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll, yeah, I know the commissioners have talked, they wanna start, they wanna do some other changes. Yeah, yeah, I'm okay with the two.
That emotion?
Yeah, had a motion, I'll second, all those in favor, aye? Uh, Hamlet Land Swap.
As they asked me to bring that up again, that's at one point, one acre, they wanna just swap it where all their together. I brought pitch at last meeting.
Yeah, okay.
And it, I mean, it makes sense, if they keep it, there's no road access for them to sell it. And, I mean, we're gonna swap them the same in mine lane, just, they got three parcels. Which, four counting that one, and they just won't put it all together.
Yeah, I don't think that'd be a big deal to do that, right? Shouldn't be. I will get that started.
We need, excuse me, probably need a resolution to start with. Just itemizing, anytime you guys do a transfer of real estate or sell real estate, you gotta start by resolution to itemize what you're gonna transfer.
Okay.
Since they're a nonprofit, you don't have to bid it out, so.
So is that something they'll add to supply or we supply it?
Um. Yeah, good question, will they have an attorney that they, they work with?
Well, man, imagine they got one.
Just have them, if you could, have them contact me and give me the information about the property, the parcels.
Okay.
And then I can put in a resolution for you, so that way they don't have to.
But if they gather an attorney, let them go ahead and do it?
I mean, typically, that's how we do it, if somebody petitions us for something, which is, I don't know what this is, but I mean, if they don't, I don't know if they have to engage charity.
Yeah, yeah, just. I'll do that, I'll call them at the meeting.
Okay.
So are you making a motion to move forward with that?
Yes, I'll second, all those in favor, aye?
You got anything else to know?
I don't.
Anything, Mike Lee, you got anything for us? Say, who else have anything for us?
I guess I could bring up, Mr. Kendall Cole is having a meeting. In this room next Monday, he wants all taxing. Um, entities along with all elected officials. To join in.
I will be out of town.
Mm-hmm.
I'll be out of town, sorry.
I am?
I appreciate the invite.
Just doing like he asked me to do, Monday, right? Monday, yes, eleven o'clock, this room.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
I'll get you to invite you.
So you manage, but I'll stay out of town, won't give them one.
Stupid question for you.
What's up?
Does this district have a price part of Stark County?
Uh, not the entire county, but most of Stark County.
Most, okay.
Uh, Washington two. Excuse me, Washington two. Things like all of Oregon, Russell has that, and. Russell has that, Kendall has it. Since it was redistributed in twenty twenty.
It's probably a parade a couple months, but he said he had part of Stark, I just wasn't sure what, okay.
Thanks for that.
Thank you.
Uh, no further biz, help?
Is that meeting opens on the other, is it called home, or is that just for like?
I'm sorry?
Is that meeting opens on the other, on Monday?
Um, he just told me to invite elected officials and taxing entities, so.
Well, Park Board is a taxing entity.
Right.
If you're taxing NC, then I guess, I guess you're welcome to come. I'm just, I'm just doing what I was asked to do.
Yeah, probably gonna have to post, if we're gonna have a forum of elected officials, we'll probably have to post for it to be a public meeting anyway, so, yeah.
Even if Kendall's the one that's showing the talking?
Yeah, we've got a forum there.
Okay.
Uh, no further business, motion adjourned. Second.
This is a record. Good job, guys.